I don't need to sign them or do anything to them, they're just.
Commissioner.
You did? We're recording. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called order. Roll call please.
Chair Schwartz.
Present.
Vice Chair Newt.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Wilich.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Commissioner Kayla is gone of an excused absence. First item on the agenda as always is public comment. Please be reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, patrol jurisdiction or advisory power and public comment for anything that's not on today's agenda. And you may comment on consent items at this time as well. So any general public comment, you have four minutes, come to the podium, state your name and address.
Lyndamore 113 South M Street. And.
You take it off.
And.
I'm gonna start.
Can you put the timer up please?
Sure will.
Okay, thanks. I hope to be doing this well. I'm rather upset at compassionate less horrific act that happened in Canada with over 400 hostages being killed for no good reason. And so compassion is high on my talk right now. Also, I just want to check to see if I have my facts straight because I was at the November 4th meeting and I believe that Tara Eddy submitted a petition that had, I think she said 65 names on it that were concerned about the 10-foot repairian setback that was being discussed as part of the zoning update. The minutes from that meeting say nothing about that. They don't show the petition. And petitions have previously, you know, been posted in the minutes of the meetings when they've been submitted. So I have heard comments from the public that they are concerned that this commission rules government by staff rather than people. And I never could see an incident of that. However, after seeing that the staff recommended to just go ahead with this 10-foot repairian setback at this point because we need to update zoning. I believe I'm getting that right in the minutes. And then seeing nothing about the residents that are very concerned about how much this is going to impact their property. Particularly, I would imagine the people in town. You put 10 feet on either side of a prick that runs through residential property and that's practically their whole yard. So I want to know, you know, if I have that correct and if so, why did it happen that way? And then the other thing that bothers me as far as the compassion thing is the printing of a 32-page apology by a resident who recognized on their own time that they had done something that was not appropriate, inconsiderate or compassionate, and went to great lengths to explain their position. And the whole thing was printed for the public to read without the other side expressing any compassion, forgiveness, understanding, etc., which to me gives an impression that there's the pearly white suit and glove side and then there's the evil residents that have dark thoughts side. That's the impression that I got. That's what I don't like, particularly after hearing, you know, how lack of compassion can get so incredibly out of hand to create a horrific incident like we see in Canada. I would like to commend that individual for their honor, their character, their bravery, their integrity, their humility and their decency. And I think it's very important that if something like that is going to be hung out like to use a word that possibly doesn't appeal here, dirty laundry, that both sides need to admit that we're all human. And there should be some extension of compassion. The other thing is it took 11 months of fighting the Canadian government over the ostriches and I've been asking for a microphone for that many months too. So I would really like that to be addressed at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me, O'Neil, 210 Ash Lane. Can you hear me? I actually am kind of just kind of going off of what Linda just said. I had wanted to address you guys tonight. I also read the letter from the gal who threatens you and I do not condone her threatening to any of you. But I do, I thought it was really kind of in poor taste that it was published as in the agenda. But I am glad that I was able to read it because I would just like to say that she is not the only one in this committee who, in this community, who's feeling frustrated. And I'm not sure that you all understand the frustration that we feel. Yes, I have lived here for my whole life, over 65 years. And I've seen things that I don't like to see going on. And I know change is hard for people. But it's like every time I read the agenda, it's one thing after another that everybody's trying to change. I have people that come in my shop on almost a daily basis that are from out of town. They say, "We love this little community. Don't let anybody change it. It's so great. We love the downtown. We love this. We like that." People come in looking to find where Sacagawea Park is because they have a friend who does sit here and said, "You've got to go down to that park. It's so gorgeous." And so I wasn't aware that we had problems at the park and that we needed to do all these things. And it does, it makes my heart sick when I think that there's going to be 26 trees that are removed from that park. When real community that wants people to plant trees and we're ripping trees out. The other thing that I did want to mention was it was probably a month ago, the last commission meeting I was at when we were talking about the ball belts on Park Street. And then Mr. Gager had talked about the consent items and how he puts them together. The consent items are items that he's pretty sure how everybody's going to vote, so there doesn't need to be a discussion. And I had brought that up, but then Ms. Coole Newt had said during her comment time that it wasn't that you guys hadn't discussed it because you frequently discuss it, you know, at the meetings and this and that and know what's going on. I can't find anything in the minutes that you guys had talked about that, especially the one issue with the ball belts. So, and I could miss things. I mean, there's a lot of minutes to go through. But I'm not sure when you have the opportunity to talk about those things when you're not talking in front of the group. The other thing is downloading the agenda. I don't know, it was 200, 250 pages. That's a long list of stuff to talk about. And I think, I can't imagine that you're not overwhelmed because we're all overwhelmed. And there's all these issues that probably need a lot more attention, but we're trying to push stuff through one right after the other. And that's, people are getting frustrated. And I don't like to see all the changes. I go with it. But I just wanted to say I can understand that gal's frustration. I don't understand how she thought that it was okay to threaten you and I apologize that that even happened to you because I'm sure it's not a very good feeling. But anyway, that's what I have to say. And I've got five seconds. But thank you.
I write my name here, is that it?
Either before or after, just as long as you do it at some point.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm David Christopher Lewis and I live at 16 Willabon Lane in the county, just outside Livingston. So the primary thing I want to talk about is the pool and my desire to see the purification system be with ozone rather than the standard that in the past is chlorine because chlorine is dangerous. So what I did was I used AI and I sent to the commissioner or the manager, city manager, and also Bruce Lay and Andrew Field, an email and then a summary using AI of the potential health dangers of swimming regularly in chlorinated pools, sharing the benefits of ozonated pool water versus chlorinated pool water. Do competitive and Olympic swimmers prefer ozonated pools, which they do? And then for an Olympic-sized pool, what would the cost difference be in annual expenses for ozonation versus chlorination, which was very enlightening. And then a summary, which is about the potential savings. So the upshot is that there would be a cost reduction of $6,500 to $10,000 annually with ozonation, although there would be a higher cost initially to install the system. But over time, the break-even analysis was within two to four years, it would break even and then there would be compounding savings after that. So I would encourage you to have the people in charge of installation of the pool as part of the wellness center to really consider ozonation. And I talked to Grant just before the meeting and he said he did talk to some of the people and and he was expecting them to get back to me and no one ever did. So I think it's important if we truly desire wellness that we look at everything and the pool is a big part of it. I've swum in the city pool and I really don't like the chlorine. I go to Chico instead and there's no chlorine. It's much better. I don't feel any toxic effects. So over the long term, let's plan to do things right from the beginning and install a system, even if it costs a little bit more, let's raise the money and see where it goes from there. So I just honor each of you and I provided this handout for the current commissioners and the three future ones. Another topic that's not directly in your jurisdiction, but it was more for your enlightenment is this brochure that I just received on geoengineering. You may have seen what's called chemtrails in the atmosphere. I've been very concerned about this for many years. Initially, I didn't believe what I believe now, which is that these jets are actually spewing out toxic chemicals into our environment. So this is another health issue which impacts all of us. We have a farm and we're noticing things are not the way they used to be. Even growing organically and even in a greenhouse. So this is mainly just for your information. I did connect with the governor. I connected with our representatives and both in DC and in Helena. It's a topic that you're going to hear more about. Some people call it, you know, chemtrails, but the correct term, I believe, is geoengineering. And this brochure will teach you everything you need to know about it initially and then you can act accordingly. But, you know, if you go to Helena for any reason, it's just awareness. So thank you very much. God bless you all for your service and I'm done.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, neighbors. My name's Brooke Laird and I live at 77 Ninth Street Island Drive. I'm here just to offer some comments on last week's discussion regarding short terminals, long terminals. I know next week it's on the agenda, so maybe it's just food for thought before next week and I can come back next week and offer more thoughts. I've got plenty. I'm a 23-year resident of Park County and owner of Key Montana Property Management, which manages short and long-term rentals. And I'm here because they're an important measurable part of Livingston's tourism economy. And the choices we make now about STR policy are going to have a direct consequence for local incomes, jobs and small businesses. As we all know, tourism in Montana, I can give you all the numbers, the billions of dollars, Yellowstone National Park being so close, hundreds of millions of dollars in spending in our gateway communities and obviously we're a direct beneficiary of that visitation. Our Park County statistics show the food, accommodation and recreation sector accounts for 28% of our local jobs here in Park County, roughly double the state average. And this underlies how strongly our workforce and small businesses depend on our visitor stays. We're a tourist destination and we thrive on a tourist economy. And it's been that way in Park County for a very long time. The county's own STR review back in February of this year reported 1,346 advertised short-term rental listings in the county. Yet 231 were active licensed rentals, demonstrating to me both the scale of visitor lodging supplied by private homes and the presence of an already established formal licensing program, which we already comply and pay into. These short-term rentals generate lodging tax receipts, 8% to the state, which flow back to Park County and provide important capacity for travelers who otherwise might not visit or could spend or would spend less locally. If short-term rental supply is limited or non-existent, they will travel elsewhere into other mountain towns to spend their time and their dollars. For my personal business, after last week's discussion, I feel it's really important to have actual numbers and data, which I think should come into play with the decisions that we make in terms of the short-term regulation. Our average length of stay at our 44 short-term listings, eight of which are in the city, the rest are in the county, our average stay is 3.35 days. That is over three days of tourists eating, recreating and supporting local businesses. And this is my data, not necessarily other stuff that you can find out there. Short-term rentals do not exist in a vacuum. They create and sustain a cascade of supporting jobs and local spending, housekeeping and laundry, maintenance, landscaping, septic plumbing, realtors, property managers, retail restaurants, breweries, guides, recreation outfitters who rely on these visiting customers. The tax revenue flowing back to local government that supports our public services and infrastructure. There's not a guest in any of our homes that says they don't appreciate the local touch of a local property manager and being able to stay in a local home that feels real, that it doesn't contribute to what they spend and do here. They all do at least one of the services we recommend, stay, eat at one of the restaurants, buy from these local retailers. Every single time, it's the biggest feedback we get is how important this stay is. For my business, again, just to let you know, this is just 2025 to date. Some numbers on the amount of money that is spent back into our local people. $17,000 to date has been spent with local artisans, local businesses, Moshi Food, Blue Bean Coffee, Riverbend Embroidery. That number, $17,000 in gifts to our guests that we've paid. $327,000 in housekeeping payments to local housekeepers. Pardon me?
Time is up.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Well, I'll come back.
It would be nice to share that with us too.
And I can, I'll send this to you. I just got started.
And you'll send it to us after she sends it to you?
If she sends it to me, I will send it out.
Send it right away.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Come back, yes.
Yeah. Thanks, Brooke.
Good evening, commissioners. Leslie Feigl, Livingston Area Chamber of Commerce. There is our Livingston Christmas Stroll poster for this year. I see there's a proclamation on the agenda for this evening. It'd be great. Being that Stroll's almost 100 years old to have one of those. Not exactly who does proclamations. That was a discussion that Ms. Newt brought up before, like what is procedures, the proclamations and how to bring them forward. So that would be great. Also, we didn't get one for the parade last year proclamation, first time ever. So that was, bring that one up too. The Small Business Saturday, that would be, that's on the proclamation that was started by a credit card company and which kind of took off. Great and all, but there's a lot of other, I think, really great things for, and we received one last year. So do you do a proclamation every year for the same event every year? Just wondering. First of all, you had made comments last year on it, that's why I remember. Yeah. So number two, hard act follow over here because what she said was absolutely correct. I had to go babysit that night with my granddaughter who was here and I missed. Um, I had to go babysit that night with my granddaughter who was here and I missed apparently the remainder of the uh, discussion with the commission. And how um, under zoning code, which I worked a lot of hours with, with Jennifer. I had no idea that it um, actually was going to go into vacation rentals. That definitely would have been something that maybe carved out a little bit larger. That it was on the actual agenda for conversation, but um. That uh, you know, that's definitely going to be moving forward, it's going to be a larger part of the uh, conversation here for this community. Because our community relies a lot on it. With all the homes that we, um, that you, the commissioners have approved. Um, that are going to be built um, here soon in the coming, you know, year or so, getting started groundbreaking and all of that. Vacation rentals are not our housing issue. They're, they're not and um. I definitely will be back up here at the next commission meeting to talk about that, but. I know that uh, Quentin, I've been seeing you down there for years at the Christmas show, so I hope we see you again this year and. Um, we have a lot of um, fun surprises this year down there. So thank you.
Thanks, lovely. Any other public comment in the room?
To Chicago two oh four East Calendar Street. Uh, my son and I watched uh, Ken Burns Revolution on Sunday. Enjoyed it thoroughly and I just wanted to take a minute. With that in mind, say congratulations to the winners of the last election. It was a wonderfully done, hard fought election. Want to thank all of you for leaving office for your service. And all the hours you put in doing the best you could and trying to figure complicated issues out. Um, and I want to thank the voters for having their voices heard. It is a remarkable thing that because of the American Revolution, we have. What we have today and my heart was filled with gratitude watching that series. There's another, another series that Mr. Burns did on national parks. And I have been going through a process of doing research. On Livingston's role in the creation of the national parks since we were the first. Enters the very first national park in the world and the more I study it. Uh, Yellowstone Park is a world heritage site and the more I study it. I realize Livingston should also be a world heritage site and if you really research. The twenty hotels that were created during this five-year period of time between nineteen oh three and nineteen oh eight, you will realize. That we, the whole concept. Of national parks actually came out of Livingston, Montana. It is remarkable. That said, my grandfather started and Livingston started with vacation rentals. Short-term rentals, twenty hotels. And I have the joy of experiencing. The amazing thing that vacation rentals do for our downtown. We would not have our businesses succeed had, were there not short-term rentals in Livingston, Montana downtown area. Uh, they advertise, uh, the whole prejudice against short-term rentals. Is just old, frankly. And if you really understand that it is simply advertising on the internet and bringing in people who otherwise wouldn't even know about. Livingston, Montana, then you would really begin to appreciate the role of the short-term rentals and vacation rentals. In downtown Livingston. Not only do we advertise and bring in new customers. Because we, we don't, all of our customers were taken away from us by M D O Ts. So we needed, we so needed to have customers for our businesses downtown. When people stay at the Grable. Inevitably, they come back and they say, I had the best time because I was right next to. This store, this restaurant, and I could walk. To wherever I was going. Those customers would not be there if it weren't for the hotel segment of Airbnb. I think this commission needs to really begin to. Get the data that shows how very important they are. And regulating them and limiting them in any way at all would be harming, harmful to our businesses. I just spent this morning from eight thirty till noon on the Housing Coalition. Again, our, our information on that is outdated. We now have a glut of long-term rentals. In our area, there's seven hundred long-term rentals now available in Bozeman. We are, we are, we don't need the kind of long-term rentals that we needed before. That we've done a good job. So I, I think that this commission really has to revisit. What happens with short-term rentals in downtown Livingston, Montana. We would not survive without them. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room before I go online? All right, I'll see if anybody jumping up. We'll go online. Any public comment online, please come up mute or raise your hand. Any public comment online? I don't see anybody raising their hand. Hey, go back in to the room one more time. Last chance, last call. All right, public comments um, is closed. Next on the uh, on the agenda, consent items. Um, any commissioner like any polled at this time?
Chair, did you want to go through any of the questions?
Oh, I always. Linda asked. I always forget that. Thank you for, yeah, correcting me. Usually Melissa. Kicks me, but she's fuck too far away.
Really start that one.
Okay.
Did you want?
Yeah, I wasn't taking notes. I was staring at people, making eye contact.
He looks like he's working. Um, I guess. Can we start with like the microphones because it's actually. Question I was asking right before the meeting, so it was well timed. Um.
We have a new system, but we can't make it work.
But, but it's not actually even our system.
Yeah.
Like could, could you clarify just, not that we're not trying, but we have to work.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. I, when we came to set up the meeting, the microphone system has been, had been disabled. And so we worked to try to re-enable the system before the meeting. But unfortunately, we couldn't get the microphones to talk to the base station and so. Um, I, I do regret it. This is not a room that we, the city controls. Um, we use this space that's provided by the county with the county's technology and so um. Please know it's not for lack of trying.
There is, there's a new amp in there and everything. It could make it work. So, next meeting?
Sorry.
I'll make, I'll make sure I personally get together with Greg or whoever knows how to.
Um, I guess, I'll, I, I could address the minutes since we talked about it last meeting. Um, I suspect that the comment that wasn't included was uh, accidental omission by staff and it just needs to be added. So that's something that commissioners can do. So thank you for catching something. Um, but in terms of the letter, that I was the one that asked for the letter to be put in the minutes and I'll tell you why. Um, as a public official, I take transparency really seriously. So I've had stuff mailed to my house before unsigned. I don't know, it wasn't, it wasn't a death threat. But it was certainly scary to have something come to my house when I don't give out my public address. Addressing me as a commissioner and being unsigned. That was several years ago, um, my first couple of years on the commission and I put that in the minutes and I read it into the record. Because anything that comes to me as a commissioner is part of the public record. That letter that we submitted came to all commissioners, um, and staff. And it is the public's right to see what all commissioners are sent. That is why it went into the minutes. Because it's part of what we do as a transparent government. It's not, it's not for any reason other than transparency. Because people have a right to know what's sent to all commissioners. So it's like typically what we do, um. When it's like a citywide thing or it's addressing, that particular thing was addressing policy, which is why. I said I wanted it in because it was addressing policy. It's like a thank you note from like. The Girl Scout troop or something. We don't, I mean, sometimes those have gone in the minutes, but not always. I hope that helps people understand why that goes in a minute. It's because we typically, yeah, did you want to?
Would, would it be considered ex parte communication to not share? Um, like policy exchanges from, from someone?
I think like if it's quasi judicial is ex parte. I think though many commissioners. Um, like myself probably are conservative in terms of like, if it's sent to all of us, we include it just because we don't want to. Give the appearance of impropriety. So we share it with the pub. I tend to share things with the public if it was, if I know it was shared with all of us. That's why it's in there.
Basically, it has nothing to do with compassion, it just, it needs to go into the record of manner of transparency.
It's about process, yeah, like. Um, okay, I think some things came up about setbacks, but I think actually that's an agenda item, right, that we're going to talk about. So I'm not gonna. Um, address, I think we can wait if that works for you, Chair.
Yep.
Um, and then. Some things came out, I don't know, this feels like some things came out about removing trees again. I think we've addressed that that was not a policy we passed. The things came out about ball bouts. I don't know if that's something you want to address. Like.
It just wasn't in the minutes, apparently.
I'm not sure. I don't know exactly, like, um, I guess when that, maybe it was unclear. I, was the ball bouts, were the ball bouts in a consent item? At some point?
As I, excuse me, as I interpreted the comments, um, I believe that the commenter had gone back and perhaps done a search. Or tried to find earlier references to bulbouts in, in earlier meetings. In reference to a conversation that we had, that we had had that talked about how um, these had been previously talked about. And so um, that's how I interpreted the question and, and we certainly did talk about, um. You know, the, the temporary uh, installations, you know, at the meeting, the week before, two weeks before they had gone out, so.
And then the other time that they came up, if you're searching minutes, I know was it a U R A meeting? Um, I was, I stepped out of the room because I work at MSU and they were a contractor that was used, that was giving a recommendation to the U R A, so I. That was a call, I consider that a conflict of interest, even though it wasn't a direct conflict of interest. So I stepped out of the room. So I don't know what the conversation was, but. Those are also recorded, so you could find it if you're curious, like what conversations, but the U R A is independent of the city commission. In the sense that they make decisions, um, they have independent voting authority from us essentially, um. I'm just trying to go through if I'm missing.
Yeah, no.
Please help me.
And the, the length of the agendas, um, basically, if there's a contract up before us. It needs to go before the public. Um, that takes up a lot of pages, so, um. I know it's, it's brutal to print it out. And um, and when we're updating, um. Um, zoning and stuff like that, everything has to be included, so. Our apology is, but it's public's right to know what we're voting on and what contracts we're accepting and stuff like that.
The next one was actually four hundred and seventy-nine pages, fun fact, the following meeting, so.
Yeah, reading it four or five times a weekend is uh, it's our job, it's what we do.
Yeah, um, the next was Brooke. I don't think she had questions, but she had lots of.
Right.
Facts that we haven't heard before, so.
Yeah.
Uh, David Lewis brought up.
Had questions though. Do you, oh, I guess it's like an administrative thing now, the, how the pool is maintained as staff.
Right.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. So we, we did receive the, the correspondence and the building design committee, which the commission may recall is made up of. The city manager, the city recreation director and the. Uh, Chair of the Four Ranges Foundation Board. Uh, we did um, meet and discuss the request. And at a construction progress meeting that happens every other Tuesday, um, we did put the question to the pool contractor. Uh, the pool contractor uh, was reviewing if that was um, something that would be um, feasibly possible. Given um, that the uh, design of the, the pool filtration area is already relatively, well, it's completely, it's already been built. Quite honestly, so um, the, the filtration equipment has not been put in and so that's where evaluating if that could be compatible with the system as it's currently built. And so, uh, we have another uh, construction project meeting a week from today and so hope to have some information by that for you.
Will somebody just get back to David directly then or?
Uh, yeah, yes, we have his email and like I said, we.
And maybe, maybe you can share it in city manager comments or something for the benefit of the public too. Okay. Um, the next question, Chair Schwartz, was about proclamations.
Yep.
And how we're deciding to put anything's.
They go through the um, city manager. Great, frankly, if you want, um. I know we discuss this at length, maybe you can refresh.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
That conversation.
Yes, to Chair, the uh, the commission did have a conversation in September of this year, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, about a process um, for putting proclamations on the agenda and it was also. Uh, pertaining to the content of proclamations on the agenda as well. Um, the direction that uh, I received from the commission at that time was to come back with a policy, but. Uh, it was made clear this was not a top priority and so, uh, you know.
We're working on it.
Give or take four or five meetings later, uh, it has not come back to you. Um, we have uh, looked internally. Um, at, at the other uh, city proclamation policies that existed. I believe we shared those.
Yeah, you do.
Meeting, um, several months ago, so uh, we are getting closer on that policy. Um, and uh, in the meantime, um, folks wishing to have a proclamation uh, included on a, an agenda. Uh, simply just need to reach out to me as I um, put together the agenda and it would be um, fantastic to get those proclamation requests. Uh, one week before uh, the meeting, so the, the Tuesday, the second or fourth Tuesday of the month, um, if you will. And I um, believe that was the only question I heard in there.
In the meantime though, will you just use the um, the sort of. General intent of the commission as your guiding light when it comes to like what to put in for proclamations? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we um, the discussion that you folks have had back in September, we took notes and, and we're trying to adhere to that. And so it really um, is uh, meant to, proclamations are meant to highlight, um, you know, either community events. Um, staff contributions uh, or other uh, kind of noteworthy city events that's um, uh, or happens, so.
Thank you.
I think everything else that I had was like the comments really.
Yep.
Um.
I think we covered it.
Yeah, appreciate the comments and power.
Yes, thank you. I hope that answers a lot of questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on. Consent items, anybody, would anybody like any polled, any commissioner like any polled?
May I please poll consent item I?
You may.
Oh, and also A, A and I.
I like to pull J.
So A, I and J?
Yep.
Would you like a? Motion?
I'd entertain a motion on consent items.
B through H?
B through H.
I'll make a motion to approve consent items B through H.
I'll second it.
Motion by Newt, second by Commissioner Welch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, paused, motion carries. Commissioner Newt's.
Um, I, first for the minutes, I would just like to maybe see if we could get. Uh, one through on those minutes. If we're missing, thank you Linda, um, missing any public comments on those. I know petitions are handled differently, so I would defer to city staff on how they want to handle the petition. Sometimes we put them in a packet or sometimes. City staff compiles a big pile of things until we're ready to have a discussion as a commission and then they give us everything at once and put it in the minutes. I would defer to the manager because that's his job from state law is to do that and that's not our decision, but. Uh, but I do want the comment, to make sure if we missed a comment, we can get that put in. Or.
I would be happy to review the minutes with the city clerk and bring these back at the next meeting. I would be happy to review the minutes with the city clerk and bring these back at the next meeting.
Okay, do you want me to do I? Speak to.
Certainly.
I wanted to point out. Oh my gosh, did I say I?
Yeah.
Okay. I said the wrong thing. I mean to say H, but I'm not gonna admit anything, so I'm gonna say it anyway.
Okay.
It's about the contract for the Cleary Building Corporation. This is like such a fine detail. Will you give me permission, I guess, to speak even though?
Please do.
This is like such a fine detail, like that most people would not notice, but it's on page seventy-six of the agenda. It's the fiscal impact of of an agreement. The reason that I find this wonderful is because I've been a commissioner since twenty eighteen and it used to be the case that when um spending happened with the city budget, we were doing a lot of amendments to the budget, which if you know much about budgets, it's not, or if you're somebody that pays attention to budgets closely, it can be um not the most favored way to manage a budget that's set aside for a year. So when I saw on page seventy-six of the agenda packet, these three lines that talk about what the project was gonna cost compared to what it is going to cost, like the estimated versus the real cost, and that we have a department in the city of Livingston, a division within a department that are going to manage the funds internally so that we don't have to amend or change the overall city budget. I am like three cheers from this commissioner, that's such an awesome thing. This did not used to happen in Livingston and it's happening now, and I just want to give like a round of applause for the street maintenance division and public works for um uh like it just all the, all the commendations, all the, all the props to you guys for fixing like eighty thousand dollars, figuring it out internally and making it work. Thank you. Such a big deal.
Yes.
That's the only reason I pulled that up.
Another reason why the agenda is that long is the whole contract's in there for that as well.
Yeah, just, I think that's so well done. Thanks, thanks to the team that makes our job easier.
Okay, that brings us to I and J.
Sorry about that.
That's fine, but I'm just gonna pull I and J anyway. Because um I would like to recognize um Nicole Madden and Chanelle Johnson for the reappointment to the Livingston Police Commission. You can stand up and take a bow. Be recognized, please. Thanks, guys. All right.
Awesome.
With that, do I have a motion to approve consent items A, I and J?
I move to consent items A, I and J, second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Lyons, all in favor?
I.
I, opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your continued work on that.
Thank you.
Ah, proclamations, speaking of proclamations, we have one this evening. Regarding proclamation of the city. Proclamation of Livingston City Commission declaring November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, Small Business Saturday in Livingston, Montana. Whereas the city of Livingston proudly recognizes the unique and vital role that our small businesses play. Not only as economic engines, but also as central figures in fostering a vibrant and welcoming community. Whereas our small business owners are dedicated individuals who bring their passion, skills and commitment to Livingston, creating opportunities, strengthening, strengthening family livelihoods and supporting community goals with unwavering resolve. Whereas each small business contributes to the character and spirit of our city. From creating local jobs to supporting community initiatives, and it is through their hard work and determination that our local economy and neighborhoods thrive. And whereas Small Business Saturday observed this year on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five is an important reminder to shop small, invest locally, show our support from small businesses that shape our lives and sustain our community. And whereas by shopping local, our residents help strengthen Livingston's economy, foster personal connections and contribute to a robust result, resilient city. Now therefore being resolved on behalf of Livingston City Commission, I Quentin Schwartz, due Chair, do hereby proclaim Saturday twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five to be Small Business Saturday in Livingston, Montana. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I'll see you out there on Small Business Saturday, supporting the community. Look forward to it.
Me too, um. Just a quick question I'm gonna ask Leslie, is this still sponsored by American Express or? Uh, okay, unfortunate. Yeah, I have a problem with that, but. They, they're not mentioned here and that's just fine with me. So, yeah, let's shop local. I do all the time, everything I can.
Invite as many people from Bozeman and far away to come and grease our gears of farmers.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other commissioners? When? No.
No, I mean, I'm like making my list for my husband and kids. Let's all put that on the record.
All right, um, there are no scheduled public comments this evening. We have one action I uh, action items, um, first action item. Ordinance three zero six five and ordinance of the City Commission of City of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter twenty-nine of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Flood Plane Regulations by re- by repealing the entirety of chapter twenty-nine and replacing it with revised flood plane hazard management regulations, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. The item before the commission this evening is ordinance three zero six five, which seeks to amend chapter twenty-nine of the Livingston Municipal Code to um create flood plane regulations that are in compliance with the net insurance program. Um, I will soon turn it over to direct planning director Jennifer Severson. And uh she will be joined by Tracy Sears from the state of Montana's um Department of Natural Resources and Conservation and um the uh the item before the commission is a bit of a continuation of the conversation that we had at the last meeting. And I, you you may recall and as some public commentators have pointed out, uh, there was a a discussion uh related to the flood plane and uh incorporating um the flood plane regulations into uh chapter thirty in the zoning code update. Uh, based on public comment that was received from community members, uh, including the the petitioner that was referenced earlier. Um, that's uh that those items um were uh pulled out um of of the zoning code update. We had had conversations with um the person who submitted the petition and their their digital counsel um through the city attorney for that, so uh pulled that out, but nonetheless, uh, we were reminded by the state um, uh, that uh we still have non-compliant flood plane regulations. Um, ours have not been updated since uh twenty eleven. And and so uh Tracy Sears has entered the waiting room, I will admit her, and in a very timely way. Uh, it seems like a appropriate time to turn it over to um Director Severson, uh, as she um discusses this um, this initial step, this interim measure, um, while staff prepares to do the study um and perform the analysis that was discussed in the last meeting, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question of the manager first? What does it mean that we're non-compliant? What does that mean?
Well, um, you know, I uh, I would just offer that we have actually Tracy Sears.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah, one of the big talking points for her, so Director Severson.
Evening.
Good evening.
Hello, I will try to make this pretty beef. Um, as Grant said, Tracy Sears, um, who is with Defense Natural Resources and has been working with us and FEMA pretty much since I've been here, she is on the line. And at the end of my brief presentation, I'm gonna um kind of turn it over to her to answer any questions you have about the the compliance question, um, why we we kind of need to do this um pretty soon, uh, like now. Um, so if you want to just go to the next one. So as is in your staff report, um, except the one in yellow, which I realized when I was doing this, it was kind of important to put in there and I missed, I apologize. Um. But this is um Montana Department of Natural Resources, which is where um the uh the sta- the state staff that works with FEMA who regulate our flood planes and who regulate our flood plane programs across the state. That's where that is housed, um, that's where Tracy Sears works. Um, they recently updated their, um. They called their community flood plane management model regulations. They drafted model regulations uh for communities to use to base their own regulations on. Um, and within that, they provided some, uh, they they hit all of uh FEMA, so Federal Emergency Management Agency. And when you hear me say NFIP, that's the flood and National Flood Insurance Program requirements. Um, their model flood plane regulations align with those, the minimum standards that are required to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, which we do. Um, they provided communities in their model regulations some higher standards that they could opt in for, and I will address those. I identified those in the staff report. Um. Uh, that we did, we are proposing to opt in for. Um, these regulations, as Grant said, have not been updated since twenty eleven. That's at the same time that the FEMA flood plane maps were updated, um. This, as the yellow bullet says, this is just to update the flood, the the text regulations that are in chapter twenty-nine of the Livingston Municipal Code. The flood plane map is actually done by FEMA. It is not a mapping exercise done by the city like the zoning map is. Um, there are some uh amendments, uh map amendments, things that can happen after that, but but really they take the heavy lifting of of putting all that together. And that will be done once the mapping study that is currently going on post twenty twenty-two flood um is completed. Uh, but this is just for the regulations in our code, the text regulations. Um, the DNRC requires the city to revise its flood plane regulations to comply with the new community um model regulations that FEMA has given them. Um, and DNRC has already reviewed and given us preliminary approval to the revised flood plane regulations as they're being presented to you tonight. That is something new that is required, um, because I asked them about that in case there were changes. Uh, they now require the draft of the flood plane regs to go through their review so they can highlight and confirm that it meets everything before it comes to you. So that's why we did it a little differently than we made other things. Um, next slide, geez. Um, so for the proposed higher standards, these are the things, kind of in a nutshell, that um that we decided to opt in for to exceed um the NFIP's minimum requirements um for participation. Uh, I I kind of divide them into um those that apply to the flood hazard area and that's the floodway and the flood plane. Um, that uh the higher standard there is, and they're not like, here's the the lower standard, here's the higher. These are, these are their own things. So if we had not opted in, there's not like a difference. Um, the construction or storage of an artificial obstruction subject to flotation or movement during flood level periods, cemeteries, mausoleums or any other burial grounds. So those would be restricted from the flood hazard area. Um, our cemetery is quite far out of any flood hazard areas, so it would not, that would not be impacted. But any new cemeteries, other burial grounds like that, they could not uh be developed in um a flood hazard area. Uh, floodway, so that is just um again, one part of the flood hazard area um where development is the most restrictive. Um, we uh opted in for two things for higher standards. One would be the safety of access to property in terms of flooding for ordinary and emergency services. So that has to be taken into account. And also no large scale clearing of riparian vegetation within ten feet of the mean annual high watermark or edge of stream channel. Uh, the FEMA does not require any um any buffer of riparian vegetation, um, so this is a higher standard at ten feet, um, just to get something in there. Um, until we can do a study as we discussed with the zoning update. Uh, for the flood plane, which is on the outer edge of the flood hazard area, does not include the floodway. Uh, development standards there, permits are a little um more lenient, but still um have to go through permitting. Um, structures need to have safe access during times of flooding up to the base flood elevation for ordinary and emergency services, provided there are no reasonable alternate locations or structures for manufactured homes, access for a manufactured home hauler is also provided. Um, so that means if they're getting a manufactured home, if they're hauling it out somewhere, the access to get there still also has to be considered.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Uh, the next slide, just briefly touches on strategic alignment of the growth policy. I pulled up the obvious ones. I think indirectly, there's probably others. Um, but these are the ones that are directly tied, I would say, with keeping our flood plane regulations up to date. Um, strategy four two one one, improve the quality of water valleys, including but not limited to the Yellowstone, Fleishman Creek, Watersheds, Wetlands, flood plains, groundwater, aquifers and all other waterways and riparian areas. Um. Objective four three two, protect the riparian corridors, preserve unique wildlife, promote water quality, provide for public sales or open space. Strategy four three two one, continue to limit development in the flood plain through the application of the Livingston Flood Plane Regulations. Uh, strategy four three two two, protect the Yellowstone River's natural flow and flood cycles to promote the health of the riparian area and associate wildlife. And strategy four three two three, explore regulatory options for protecting the riparian area and waterway corridors. Um. And then next. Uh, that was actually mine. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Tracy Sears with DNRC um to kind of impress upon you and and answer questions about the urgency of the need to think these ways. Tracy, you there?
I am. Can you guys hear me okay?
We sure can.
Yep.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Jennifer. Um, as Jennifer mentioned, my name is Tracy Sears and I am part of the DNRC flood plane team. I'm the National Flood Insurance Program Coordinator for the state of Montana. And um uh, we've been working with Jennifer the last few years, but we've been working with the community since about two thousand and nineteen to update their current flood plane regulations and some of the reasons that that um that Jennifer mentioned, we've had our model ordinance reviewed a number of times through FEMA. It's a general process. They do an annual review, so does, so does our department to see if if the model is meeting the minimum state and federal regs. And um, and the reason for that is the the part of the basic participation in National Flood Insurance Program is that communities that participate must adopt and enforce local regulations that meet or exceed state and federal flood plane regulations and Livingston is not alone in this. We are actively working with the majority of the communities in the state to update the regulations right now because just a couple of years ago, which kind of put an urgency on this, um, there were, there was some language um in the model that that drew FEMA's attention, especially when it came to agricultural structures, um definitions on substantial improvement. Uh, there was a number of things that that they were flagging that they felt were not in compliance any longer with the federal regulations. So this wasn't a, it's a good suggestion to update um, your flood plane regulations. It's a, all the communities need to update the regulations, so we um, we've had Livingston um as that first wave and and has been on that list, like I said, since two thousand and nineteen. This was kind of identified um to have the ordinance updated with within a year of the visit that we did in two thousand and nineteen. Um, we kind of gave a little bit of leeway because we knew that there were some changes going into two thousand and twenty-two. Um, but now that urgency is, is being required um by our federal partner um for those local communities. Uh. So we just wanted to just kind of stress that. I know um Jennifer mentioned you guys are looking at some of the higher standards. That's fantastic. Um, but these ordinances need to be updated as as soon as possible, and then if the community so feels like they want to add on any um higher standards, they can do that at any time. That's encouraged under the program. They just want to make sure that the 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 local ordinances meet or exceed the state and federal regulations and right now um, they don't, not not just on the federal side, but also from the two thousand and nine change to the state regulations um when it came to elevation of residential structures. So I hope if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Clarifying questions?
I have one.
I don't actually think I have any.
Commissioner, um Vice Chair Noots?
Uh, thank you, Tracy. Um, I do have a question. You just, you just stated, well, I guess I have two questions. One is um if we continue to stay out of compliance, what does that mean for the people who live in Livingston? And my second question is, you said that higher standards are encouraged. Could you describe what you mean and also like why they would be encouraged?
Oh, absolutely. Um, a- as far as your, the the first question that you asked, um concerning what can happen to communities in this situation, um, if we're, we're not seeing movement on an update to the regulations um as quick as possible. It could put the community's. It could put the community situation that they may be put on probation by FEMA. Now, that is a FEMA action. But they are, we're having to provide updates on all the ordinances that we're working with right now. And they're wanting to see that there's some movement. If there's no movement, they may actually have to come in and say, if it's not updated. You know, if it's not updated in a timely manner, the community can look at being either put on probation or even sanctioned. And that means the community would not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. It would impact potential disaster assistance and and insurance being made available throughout the community. That's the last resort. I think Livingston's always tried to move forward with that, but that's, that's what we've been, that's what's been conveyed to us through FEMA as we are going through this process. And as far as the higher standards, the whole premise on the National Flood Insurance Program is trying to reduce flood losses and flood damage. And there are the minimum federal regulations and also the minimum state regulations. But, uh, but the program does encourage, and even at the state, we do encourage higher standards. I know Jennifer mentioned a few of the higher standards that are in the model that's kind of highlighted that the community's opting into. We have other communities that have gone above and beyond even those standards based on different factors that they're concerned with. City Missoula, Missoula County actually have cumulative substantial improvement stand, standards. So if somebody's making an improvement on their structure, they're tracking it through their building department and floodplain administration. And they're, they're looking at it at a five-year period. So each community is a little different and unique on what higher standards they're highlighting and ones that they, they think might be a good fit for their community. And again, as they are just trying to reduce those flood losses and flood damage.
Thank you. Can, can I ask one more sort of process question, if that's okay?
Question I'd like to ask too.
Do you want me to go first? I guess I'm just curious, like. So we know that, it sounds like, you know, staff is. It sounds like staff is working with the state and the under, like probably FEMA. We've been probably working with FEMA since we actually had the flood. And I'm wondering, like, could you share a little bit of information about how you decided what to recommend to the commission versus the alternatives that could have been recommended? Like, how did you guys land on this? I'm just, I'm interested because you've been working a lot more with the flood. All the flood folks, for lack of a better term, since you both got here than we have, so.
No, I, I absolutely, great question, Vice Chair Noots. So throughout the, the zoning process, this has been a point of discussion. And was actually the topic of conversation at, at least one consolidated land use board meeting that I'm aware of. And there, there were a range of, of, of opinions. You know, that ranged from a twenty-five foot to all the way up to a three-hundred foot, if I'm not mistaken, was the highest that some community members had suggested as far as a buffer zone. And so, you know, hearing the, the public feedback and having some discussions. It, it seemed like we weren't quite at a place where we could go for that. And so the ten-foot that is recommended here is one that is used in, in a number of communities. It appears in some US EPA literature as, you know, kind of a, a minimum riparian buffer zone. And so that's, that's, I believe, how we came up with the ten-foot, and it's in the next slide.
It's in the slide after the questions.
Perfect. So I would just share that as well, Jen. So feel free to jump in anytime here, Jen. So, yeah, the, the ten footer. I believe everybody can see that now. So, yeah, Jen, would you like to take it?
Yeah, no, this is just a slide showing, again, because we have not undertaken yet a, a kind of a holistic look at riparian protection. I know other organizations may have, but we kind of need to do it at the citywide level through the city. There's a lot of things at play. You know, there's different reasons to have a riparian buffer. What are you trying to do? Are you trying to reduce the pollutants? Are you trying to protect the stream banks? Are you trying to provide habitat? And I, I think it's important, as, as a lot of literature, this is just one table of other, of literature that's out there saying that kind of there, there's different riparian buffer widths for different purposes. And the, the minimum in this table for kind of providing anything, there's like at the top, kind of a zero to five with grass for, but that's in meters. This one is in ten. For the floodplain regulations, I first sent a draft of this for DNRC to review back in September. And we'd been working with them. So before we even kind of brought you, brought forward the, the zoning regulations. Rather than propose that we just do the minimum, there were some things, because you asked how, how the proposal includes some but not others. That was with me evaluating, looking at everything, looking at what I am capable as a one-person show of doing right now. And, and enforcing, and, and so, but I also didn't think it made a lot of sense to say we don't need anything. So again, this is a start. I want to also just kind of emphasize. This is just to get, and if you wanted to, you could say, you know what, all the higher standards, take them out. Let's just do the bare minimum tonight. We'll discuss the higher standards later. But also, it doesn't mean that we can't update these regulations again. And I don't mean waiting for another fourteen years. We can certainly do that, but, but the bare minimum. And, and I have brought you proposed more than that, but the bare minimum without those higher standards that have been identified really does need to go through. What I brought you beyond that was me trying to get something in there. Without having to delay and having a community-wide discussion. Does that make sense?
So good, yeah.
Commissioner Woolwich?
I'm gonna ask a basic question. Ten feet, is it ten feet in elevation? Is it ten, ten feet horizontally? Horizontally from the river, ten feet is not that far. Ten feet horizontally on Billman is quite a bit. Like, it could be, you know, it'll never get there as far as floodwater goes. So do we classify them separately between the river and the creeks? And what our setbacks are for that?
It's by a high watermark, isn't it?
Yeah, right.
It is, it's in our code, I think it says the, it's not bank high here, is it? Is ordinary high watermark or average high watermark?
Watermark.
Mean high watermark.
And it, but it says ten feet, so like.
It says ten feet, and that is, that is, well, Billman is pretty much all horizontal. I mean, you're not. But again, this is, and this doesn't include Fleishman, because right now Fleishman is not in the floodplain, the regulatory floodplain. And that is, you kind of bring up why we need to have a dedicated look at this on the different creeks. Because each of them are different. The Yellowstone is obviously a very different system and river than Billman. And if we also want to be able to place buffers and restrictions on developments along the riparian areas, along Fleishman, that has to come outside of these. Until such time, if ever, that Fleishman is mapped in. This is just kind of a, put something in, but yeah, it is the ordinary high watermark. Yeah, not like a flood.
Right next to the river and.
Pretty much. And, and this, honestly, this is just no large-scale clearing of vegetation. So it would mean if there was anybody that wanted to come in and do some, some like grading and, and site prep, they couldn't remove that.
Theoretically, the large-scale movement of dirt over by the hospital and the levee system, water moving system over there would be. Because that's, I guess it's outside of ten feet, so it wouldn't be.
That is true, and I would also just remind, well, I, I guess I shouldn't remind because I'm not sure if, if you're aware of this. But if something like that came in, like a development at the hospital, chances are it goes through site plan review. And we would require certain erosion control. DEQ requires certain erosion control measures to prevent sediment migration, also disturbance along there. Plus, if they're along the Yellowstone, within a certain amount of, of space. That should require a three-ten permit for water quality through Park Conservation District.
I know you have safeguards in there.
And, and if I could just get, add for context to the commissioners, as Director Seaberson noted. Not only is Fleishman Creek not currently mapped, but actually Billman Creek within the city limits is a very, very limited stretch of. So it's, we were talking about a very, very limited scope of, of coverage.
So, yeah, we're, we're, this is dealing with Yellowstone.
Yeah.
For all intents.
For all intents.
For all intents and purposes right now.
Um, but just, I, I just, the, the reminder.
Yeah, yeah, for the public's knowledge, you know, for comments and stuff, you know, it has nothing to do with Billman really or Fleishman.
It doesn't. And I, I don't, I wouldn't say this is the most effective thing probably, but I don't have anything to base another recommendation on when I drafted this. Again, this is what has already been reviewed by DNRC, so I would just impress upon you that any changes that you would want to make tonight, and I'm not by any means trying to discourage that. I just want to make it clear that those actually, the whole goes back to DNRC.
I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Is River Drive within ten feet? Would that be in the, like, segments of that possibly over? That's a clarifying question. If there are questions of that, that would be.
I'd be shocked if there were. Actually, it could be, yes.
Any, any development the hospital would do, there, I, I highly doubt they would be disturbing anything that close to the river.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm pointing out getting it is like, it is just a very, very thin strip.
It's already about developed, yeah.
Basically.
I yield.
Commissioner, anything to clarify? We're going to move to public comment. All right, with that. I have any public comment on ordinance three-zero-six-five? Please step forward. Any none in the room?
Leslie Feigl, Livingston Chamber. So just a quick question with that. When you get to that point with the local creeks and the local streams within the city limits, is there possibly to do like a mapping of it? I don't mean the flood mapping from FEMA. I mean our street, streams and creeks that would be included in this, like the Billman, the Fleishman and some of the other waterways. It seems that these, these questions have been coming up, like the one out there off of Lama Lane and some of the water ditches. And just kind of like the confusion with some of the community members, especially new members in the area and with new development. It just seems to, uh, because I've been searching and I didn't find anything within the city records, if there was any kind of mapping of all the streams. Anyway, just that thought.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Okay, seeing none, let's move online. Any public comment? Please come up mute or raise your hand. Regarding ordinance three-zero-six-five. Seeing none. Back to the room. Being none, public comments closed. Commissioners deliberations.
We answered the question.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, as, as was mentioned, this, this applies to the Yellowstone and Billman Creek. Fleishman Creek is not a part of that. I do believe that we have a map that shows all of the flood areas and city limits, so.
Yeah, and those would be looked at as part of a study. So those that are there in the tree cover, all of that stuff. The ditches, I think that's also part of the discussion, more than that.
Well, and that's actually what I was going to point out, is actually the ditches are not part of. They're not regulated floodplain and all of that. They are a very real thing that we must deal with, that we developers must deal with in this city. But when it comes to floodplain, they're not, you know.
There's a gate.
I believe we had a flood from the ditch not that long ago. But we were five years ago. And I know that Fleishman Creek has flooded various culverts.
Yeah, plugged up and stuff, yeah.
A- and as a result of that, city staff does work with the ditch rider that covers the area. And we, we make a very active effort to make sure that those culverts are clear, because yes, some pretty ugly things have happened in the past.
What's a ditch rider?
Uh, the person who's responsible for maintaining and overseeing the quality of the ditch. I think back in the old days, they would ride a horse along the ditch. That's how they operated.
It's cool, man.
That's exactly, I was like, are you looking for a?
Sounds like a song.
Post-mention gig right there.
Ditch riders on the plane.
I guess to just have the conversation with it, like, when I feel like setbacks or riparian protection along the Yellowstone, ten feet seems it seems like a good start, but it also feels like it's very, very thin, like a tremendously thin strip of of, of protected property, called property, the protected land. In a wildly contentious area of natural, you know. There's a word in the head, but I can't, I can't find it. Ten feet from the mean high watermark, like the ripper app is basically ten feet wide, so you're not going to get anything there. There's nothing doing there. Our side of the river's got a little tiny bit of, you know, some flood that could be in the Watson, I think subdivision is that. I, I feel like it, if it keeps us compliant with FEMA and the DNRC. It kind of seems like ten feet is the smallest bite that we could take to just maintain compliance. I don't have any problem with that. It doesn't seem onerous. Doesn't seem like it's, I mean, if anything, I would say like fifty feet would be better. But like, then we get into private property and we get into, you know, now we're in the middle of, say, River Drive. And if we're going to talk about doing anything in the park with River Drive, and we can't do anything fifty feet from the edge of the river, then that changes the park. Can't do that. So I feel like it's good, I feel like it's a good, honest balance of where we should be. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Woolwich. Mr. Alliance.
I don't think I have anything to add. And I'm curious what you guys think.
I guess I'm, I'm. I'll go next.
To remember my name, yeah. Sorry.
Hey, it's coming to that. We need something in place, and I think this is a, a good first start. And, and secondly, it's gone through Montana DNRC. I think ten feet woefully inadequate personally, but we need to start somewhere. And this is a good, good start to have at least something updated around the book, so. That's about all I have on it, so I'll yield to Commissioner Noots.
I can't think of, I can only think of a few things that would be of such community interest as anything happening around the river. It seems one of the highest interest items. I'm sure we have people all across our whole community that would have a whole range of opinions on what to do, which makes this hard. I appreciate Tracy being here. Thank you to give us a bigger perspective view of what we're doing and why. I also really liked Director Seaberson's suggestions. I think, you know, the weight will be on the commission in the coming years to really get serious about what we're doing around the river. Particularly for all of us that lived here, you know, or were involved in some way in the community when the flood happened. So the commission will have work to do, but I think this seems like a good starting point. I like that, you know, it's tough to choose a number, but he chose the median point of the of what's conservative and reasonable, which seems like a Of what's conservative and reasonable, which seems like a good starting point from the chart that was shared, not knowing like where to start and that would be difficult. Um. To Commissioner Wilich's point, you know, it's. A lot of it's already like in the riprap area, like the ten feet, um. So for a lot of people in the community, I realize this is not going to be significant for them. Um, but we're doing the best we can. And I'm looking forward to like having data. Having data so that we can make decisions based on like the best science. So I think this is a good place to start though. And thanks for. Thanks to staff for bringing us something, um, better than nothing. And absolutely agree that like some of these recommendations that are above the minimums. Just seem like common sense with what cannot go near the river. I think that's like smart and reasonable. Um. And I like, I really want to say also that I like, um. You know, I like the thoughtfulness, obviously of like burial grounds, but also. With the access and thinking about how things are built. I think we saw that. I know you, you both came here right after the flood. But we saw that firsthand, those of us that lived here were with the city at that time. And so I think, um. It's nice to know that we're thinking about safety. And like, because our first responders have to go, whether there's a road or not. And so I think it's really nice to think about, um. How to keep the residents safe and the people that help the residents safe. So thank you. I feel good about this for a starting point. I yield.
Let's keep pushing notes.
I don't know if Commissioner Alliance wanted to.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Welch, we can go around again.
If, unless you have anything that you would like to add.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I think we all kind of feel, um. Pausious about the. The kind of de minimis figure that we're considering, particularly is it, like, you know, we're talking about impacting. Billman, which is a small creek. And, and the Yellowstone, which is the longest undammed river in lower forty-eight. Which are just categorically two different bodies of water where ten feet along the Yellowstone. I've seen, I have with my own eyes seen water ten feet from the normal high water watermark on the Yellowstone. Um, and that would be a remarkable thing on Billman. So, you know, it's, it honestly, I think it just goes to show the importance of studying this problem. Um, and, and, you know, I, I think we. The commission can get flak, get flak for saying, let's study this before we make a decision. Um, but we're, uh, we've been presented with the opportunity to make a decision before a study. Um, and I think that this is a, a reasonable starting point. So, uh, I appreciate the work that went into, to, to bring it to us. Uh, I think it's, I think it's going to be a really important future decision for the commission. Um, and, uh. I look forward to participating in that, however is, is, um, appropriated in the future. And. Um, I think it's responsible of us to come into compliance. Add some little bit of, of protection that seems, uh, reasonable and. Uh, continue to think about this in more detail in the future. I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Alliance.
I think the only thing I wanted to really add was part two, uh, Chair Noots' Coach Noots' comment about. That this may feel like it's not enough of a setback. For some people in our community and. These are minimum numbers. And so property owners along the river can certainly set back further. And set up their own, you know, fifty foot or hundred foot barrier how they see fit. And so, you know, I guess at this point it becomes. Property owner's responsibility to do what's best for, you know, the rest of us and them as well. And, uh, I guess we also reserve the right to change the number if, uh, we need to. But after we study it, we take another, you know, a good hard look at how things work. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilich. Anything else, Commissioner News?
No, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion for ordinance three zero six five.
I'll move to approve ordinance three zero six five.
I'll second it.
Motion by Alliance, second by Willich. Mr. Gager, roll call.
Chair Schwartz.
Four.
Vice Chair Noots.
Four.
Commissioner Alliance.
Four.
Commissioner Welch.
Four. Commissioner Carries.
You can entertain a motion for a short recess.
Short recess would be nice.
I'll make a motion for a ten minute recess.
Second.
All favors. And sure.
Thank you.
Ten minutes and then, yeah, we'll be back at, uh, at five after seven. Sorry to cut it off. Anyway. Moving on. Next, the last, um. Action item is approval of update to Livingston City Commission Handbook. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. The item for the commission this evening is the, uh, review and update of the Livingston City Commission Handbook. And, uh, this item is before the commission as a result of, uh, request slash discussion at the, uh, last meeting. And I have included, um, a, uh, first attempt to address the, the commission's, uh, requests. Um, related to a threat response policy, and that is included as, uh, appendix C, um, to the document. And, uh, similarly have also, uh, worked to incorporate the conflict of interest. Um, policy that was codified by the commission in April of this year. And, uh, have made, um, some other, uh, small changes more, uh, related to, um, the public comment, uh, process. And that is, uh, made in response to. Uh, really recent, um, comments we've heard from the community, um, and, uh, recent observations. Um, kind of about the public comment process. And so, uh, these are, uh, reflective of some best management practices. That are employed in some other communities to help, um, just manage the, um, public comment period and ensure that, uh, that city residents. Uh, really do have an opportunity to have their voices heard because there are times as, as we all know. Uh, when the public comment period can stretch on for, you know, an hour or more. And so this really wasn't a, an attempt to provide city residents. Um, the opportunity to interact with their government in a timely and direct way. And so. Uh, happy to stand for any questions if the commission may have.
Do we have any clarifying questions first?
Hmm.
I have a question that could probably be posed as indebted.
Don't wait till.
So deliberation. I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Can I get clarity on something? There are a few parts of the handbook that are actually codified, meaning we passed them by a vote. So that's not something that we can edit in a handbook. Can you clarify which parts are code? Um, because those are not things that we can edit tonight. It would, it would require us like bringing forth what, like a resolution or an ordinance or something depending on how it's passed. Probably a resolution.
Yeah, I think it's a resolution. Excellent, uh, excellent comment, um, Commissioner News. And I, I probably would say it may be, uh, maybe easiest for me really to just work off. The, um, the table of contents.
Okay.
Um, and apologize for folks at home as I, um, get back up, that would be off the table of contents. And, um. So, I really, the two main items that are, that are codified as I, and, and would require subsequent action. Um, as I mentioned, the conflict of interest policy, um, that was recently adopted by the city commission, uh, is a part of the Livingston Municipal Code. And so, um, that would require an ordinance to, uh, to impact. And then there is the, um, commissioner's, uh, code of conduct, um, which was passed by resolution. Um, um, and I, within the document itself, um, it, it does talk about the, the code of conduct. And, um, uh, identifies the resolution. And so those items, uh, would require subsequent action by the commission to modify. Um, and, and then similarly, um, any of the statutory citations that appear throughout the realm, relevant statutory citation. Come from MCA. So, and, and that, uh, that resolution is, uh, three eight two six dating back to two thousand and seven. Um, that created code of conduct and the, um. Conflict of interest policy was, uh, enacted by ordinance three zero five seven on April one of, uh, of this year. And so, um, those are, those are items that would require subsequent action.
Thank you. That was really my, I just needed to refresh, a refresher. Thank you.
So, yeah, any edits. I'm getting this great. Would be to the red lines or no? Because we already.
The one red line we already passed through. And that was the code, that was the conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest.
But the new would be the, um. The new would be the public comment and the, um.
Public comment and the.
The, um, threat response policy at the very end.
So just those two.
Yeah, everything else.
Everything else is, yeah, just to.
Yeah.
Well, and, and just sorry to, to jump in, commissioners, I would say to, to be clear. Items that have, you know, kind of historical presence or historical, you know, um, context in here certainly are modifiable by the commission. There are, you know, elements to, you know, say the public comment process or the way you folks conduct meetings, those could certainly be changed. Because those aren't otherwise codified in places. Um, there are a few other things that talk about how, you know, interaction with the manager. Um, that the commission works, you know, through the manager and the commissioners don't interact directly with staff. Um, those cannot be changed because those appear in state. Hopefully that provides a little bit of clarity.
Yep. Thank you. That was my only clarifying question. I yield.
Yeah, that's all I had just to, so. With that, let's open a public comment. Any public comment on the commission handbook updated?
Leslie Feigl, Livingston Chamber of Commerce. Um, I've heard from numerous people today in regards to this, uh, page seventeen. So, uh, one eighty-nine of the packet. And, you know, I talked with my representative at Mako, and I talked to the Montana Towns and Leagues and Cities representative. And I actually got laughed at once and thought that this, um, addition, which is just under between one and two. About the public, uh, comment following in order one through four. And, um, actually one laughed, um, and said, nobody else in Montana has this in their handbook. So, um. You know, the more that I looked at this, it felt very divisive. This is, um, like, this is very dividing of our community. At a time that the community wants to try to engage with the commission. Um, you like it when the room is full of people. You want people to be, you know, want to hear the transparency. But this is very divisive. To call people up in four different categories. Um, you have a lot of, a tremendous amount, like a tremendous amount of property, uh, business owners in the community. Live in the county, so they're county residences. So do they go fourth? Do they go second? Um, do, I mean, like, it, um. So it, it just seems that, uh. I mean, how necessary is this? Everybody comes up to this podium and enjoys being able to, they're learning how to use their voice. Um, there are a lot more folks are coming to the meetings and coming to the podium, um, a lot more, um, than they ever have before. Um, and I just feel that, um, I felt like I needed to make this statement tonight. That this right here to divide public comment into four sections is very divisive of our community. And I thank you for your time on this.
Thank you, Leslie.
Patricia Gray, O two oh four East Calendar Street. I endorse what was just said. Um. Please. You know, the code of conduct we had to take for the ACLU and the ACLU had to come back to the commission and say. No, this is not correct. And so the commission had to change the code of conduct. This is so bad to, and, and attempt to manage public comment. As it stands, and you know this, having watched all these years and me certainly, when people come up, they feel insecure. It's not like they come up with all the confidence in the world and say, well, I'm a business person or I'm something like that. For them to be divided then into groups. It only feel, makes them feel more insecure. And I would love if public comment. Lasted a long time, frankly. That's what we're looking for. We're looking for citizen participation, but we have a varied community. We have people that don't feel comfortable then, once you put this into place. Then it's hard enough for them to get here and make comments and then for you to divide them up and categorize them and. When they, when they're just trying to express to you what they, they really feel in their hearts and their own being. I just, please, please reconsider this. Public comment is just a variety of people coming up to. And more often than not afraid to their representatives and trying to participate in their government, please. Please reconsider this.
Thank you, Patricia.
Have you on the L two ten Ash Lane? You're in Livingston. Um, I do agree that, um. By dividing us, the community into four groups of people. Why, why do the citizens get to be first? Are they most important? And then what about the business owners? Are they least important? The people that live in the county that come in and use. Use the city services or maybe own a business or actually do own some homes in the county. You're, you're like telling us that these people are the more important than the other people. And I also think that sometimes when somebody is, um, sitting back here and thinking about getting up. Or maybe I get up and I say something and they go, oh, I should get up and say something about that. But what if, what if they're not, um, what if they're not a Livingston resident, but they're here because they're a business owner? You know, and then does that mean that because I'm a business owner and a, a community resident, that I get to speak twice that night? Um, you know, I think that, I think you're just separating people out and, and it's just looking like you're going to cause some. Hard feelings and who's most important. Thank you.
Thank you, Aggie.
Linda Marwin thirteen South M Street. And when I first read this, I just thought, well, it just is showing respect for. You know, the residents and it just was showing respect. It didn't sound like it was made to divide. However, listening to these comments, I realized. That it can create that. It is hard to get up here. It really is. I mean, I think I'm getting a little bit better about it, but I still. I go home and my armpits stink. Come to the city commission meeting because I sweat very differently. So anyway, I think keep things, keep things simple silly. You know, is, is a good rule. So I, I would also vote to just like strike that. Um, we, we can make it work.
You do a great job on that.
Thanks.
Thanks, Linda. Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, let's move online. Any public comment online? Please come off mute or raise your hand to be recognized. Saying none, let's call in the room. Public count's closed. I'll, I guess, but there were a few questions. Regarding, um, public comment and following order, um. Yeah, um. I believe the taxpayers of this city live residence, so you should have first crack at public comment, quite frankly. Um, and business owners and operators in the city, you own a business or operator in the city. I don't see any problem with them going in and order, um, with this. It's not excluding anybody, just, um. Giving priority to the people that really. That pay the taxes and, and, um, have a vested interest in the city. So. Um, with that, I will stand for deliberation. Would like to go first.
Is this about all, but all of it? Or do you want us to just stick to the public comment? Do you want us to talk about any of the parts?
Well, you can go, yeah, you can.
Okay.
Talk about. Talk about all the comment if you want.
Thank you.
Sure. And yeah, whatever. I just wanted to clarify.
I just want to say.
Not excluding anybody, yeah, that. Yeah.
I could talk about all kinds of things.
You have a floor in this commission, okay.
I'll I'll talk for here for just a moment. Um, I'm not going to use the P word, preferential. I said it, but I'm not going to use it. Um, the responsibility that the commissioners have first and foremost is to the residents of the city of Livingston and the business owners of the city of Livingston. And visitors to the city of Livingston are not secondary, but we're not limiting that either. We're just saying that people that are here, that live here, pay taxes here and vote here should speak first. The people that operate businesses should, if they live in the city of Livingston, I guess they could speak first if that's how it is, but if the, if you, if you live somewhere else and you operate a business here, you can speak second, but nobody's saying that we, that you can't speak, so that I want to make that perfectly clear. The edit that I would like to see if we were going to go forward with this is it, it says the chair solicit comments, and I think it should say the chair shall solicit comments or may solicit comments. Um, that was just the the edit that I wanted to see, uh. The other thing that I wanted, would like to see, that would entertain the city manager and and us as well is after the roll call call for the operation of the meeting, I'd like to see a pledge of allegiance put in. Takes thirty seconds. I can run it, anyone can run it, but as far as the whole holistic thing in front of us, I'd like to see a pledge of allegiance at number C or ahead of C. Uh, I'd like to see shall instead of just the way that is written, and I don't have any problems with the rest of it.
Can I ask, what page was the?
Oh, that page is on one eighty-two.
Thank you.
I yield. Sorry, I didn't say.
You have the floor, if you so wish, Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you. Um, I'll start with a technical edit on page one seventy-four. Says commissioners' code of conduct, page twenty-seven, commissioners' code of conduct, page thirty. Uh, I think that the the page twenty-seven is supposed to be uh conflict of interest. Also, just to edit there. Um. I'll chime in on the discussion about the categorization of of commenters. I think Mr. Gager mentioned kind of the the primary impetus for this is just in cases where we have you know, a huge amount of public comment, and it's going to influence the ability to to proceed to deliberation. Um, and this is a little bit out of the the order, but Mr. Gager, am I, am I characterizing the impetus for that correctly?
Uh, ye- ye- yes, I I I think that's a a
So, um, I don't, it's it's likely that I missed it, uh, but you know, we have, we we have the four-minute timer up there. Um, I I don't think I saw a constraint on the amount of time folks have for their public comment in here. Um, and I think if we're, if we're thinking about this as a means to know um facilitate an expedient meeting, which is something that I've talked about and and really do uh support, because I think that I think we're, I think the community and the commissioners are better at having meaningful discussions about policy at seven thirty than we are at at midnight. And I think that we, I think that we're, you know, I think we're, we're pushing up against equity issues when when we're trying to ask everybody to be attentive late, late into the evening. So it's, it's something that I expedient meetings is something that I, that I um do care about. I, I don't think that we achieve that at least as this is written currently. I, I appreciate, you know, appreciate and 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 tend to support the comments of previous commissioners about kind of who those of us at the table are working for is 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 folks who who live in the city of Livingston. Um, I, and I, and I think that the general sentiment from both of you was that it's not at the exclusion of folks who who don't live in the city of Livingston, um. So at least as I read this, it, it doesn't seem like it necessarily as it's currently constructed, is going to achieve the goal of of, um, limiting or, you know, contributing to an expedient, um, commission meeting. Um, because this basically just says, this is the order that that the the um comments can come in. And there's no, there's no time limit, so. I kind of want to put it to the the whole commission, like, i- is it time that we're thinking about? And if so, is this the best mechanism to achieve that? Um, I'll yield for now.
I'll trust the time thing. I think that was deliberately left out at one point in the commission handbook to give. I'm not sure if it was the chair, because I don't think it's written anywhere or, um.
You can ask.
Is it, uh, who? Who determines the time limits? Is that the chair or the city manager? I would assume it's the chair, but.
State law requires a three-minute minimum.
Okay.
And at some point, I don't remember where it is, it says four. Is it in the handbook or somewhere else?
Um, so the state code does leave it up to the presiding officer, um, outside of the the, um, qualifications that Vice Chair Nudes noted. And then, um, I do believe that it has not ever been in our handbook and it has been at the discretion, um, so.
Of the chair.
Yeah, because it doesn't appear, you know, I was looking at our agenda, it doesn't appear on the agenda, uh, but it is kind of a historical precedent here. It's, ever since I've been here, it's been four minutes.
Ever since I've been on the commission, it's been four minutes, but state codes us three.
And, uh, I think it was, yeah. Left out because, you know, if something really could. If we, if if a situation arose where we wanted to allow the public, hey, we'll give you five minutes on this specific subject or something, but I think that was the only reason why.
But I think at the state legislature, when they have a big group of people, I've seen them without warning, cut down public comment to like sixty seconds.
Oh, yeah.
When people are prepared for like three minutes. So I don't know what state code says for municipalities, but I know like at the state level, they will change it without warning down to a minute. If they, if they get like a hundred people in the room or whatever, like, I don't know if he's been to testify there ever, but.
Especially if it's repetitive, it's the same thing over and over and over. He's limited debate on that.
I don't know if that's helpful, I guess, when we go around to.
But it probably for the sake of the commission, probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have it in writing at four minutes. You know, because somebody could, a chair could abuse it and say, I don't know, ten minutes.
Do you want to give me a chance to go before we go around to?
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay. Um.
I got your head.
I'm gonna go in order.
Yeah.
I'm gonna start on page one eighty-one. There's an edit I'd like to suggest. The, um, it says the historic preservation board has an asterisk for a commissioner being on that board. Um, that's no longer the case and that board has changed along with state law. So that's page one eighty-one of the packet, page nine of the handbook. On page one eighty-two is city commission procedures. That's not qualified, right? Is that correct?
I know that is not.
Okay, so on page ten of the handbook, page one eighty-two, bless you. Love it, Wes, bless you. Um. At the bottom of the page, there's a bit that I think could be updated that matches our practice. It's the second line in two A two. Following the announcement of the agenda item, the chair shall invite the appropriate person or persons to report on the item. That is not, in fact, how we do it. We, the chair calls on the city manager and then the city manager will call on whomever it is to present because, right, according to state law, um, we do not direct staff and also we do not, we do not direct contractors that we work with or other, um, federal partners that all be under the city manager's jurisdiction under state law. So I guess I would like that clarified to say that the chair shall invite the city manager to report on the item, um. And any persons that they would want to, you know, speak to that item.
Yeah.
The same goes with developers, like developers go through the city manager, we don't call on developers. Okay, that would be the next thing, um. Uh, the same goes for page one eighty-three of the packet. It's page eleven of the handbook. Um, part three, the chair shall ask members of the body if they have any technical questions of clarification. At this point, members of the body may ask clarifying questions to the person or persons who reported on the item. That is in fact not how we do it. The members of the body, um, typically take the questions to the chair and then the chair would call on the manager and the manager would call on whoever they wanted to call on. And that's the same way they do it at the state level. In the state legislature, they work their questions through the chair, just as part of a good process. I also think that makes it easier for the public to follow meetings if we're all using the same playbook. I think. I'm gonna keep going. I'm gonna come back to the part about order of, um, comments. I'm gonna skip forward to like all my edit. So page one ninety-eight of the packets, page twenty-six of the handbook. I'm about, I'm the third paragraph in, under general background. It says, to further facilitate compliance, the city of Livingston requests that each commissioner complete a disclosure form upon taking office. We actually codified that, so it's not a request or it's a requirement of Livingston Municipal Code. So I think that, um, the city commission requires that each commissioner completes the disclosure form upon taking office.
Yeah. It's better request.
Yep. Um. Um, let's see. I'm on a roll, huh? Okay. Um, I think that one's codified, so I'm skipping that. The next one. Also. Um, okay, now we're back to, let's see, this is under I'm on page two oh four. And I'm sorry, I don't have it. All right. So the rules of contact, this is in code, right? That was qualified. Okay, so forget that.
Not in code, but in resolution.
In resolution, okay, great. I just, I guess I would say then, I would reiterate that I, we're not gonna edit this, but page two oh four says, when a city commissioner attempts to give an employee directions, the employee is put in an awkward position. And the management's undermined, like, yes, that's true, but actually the city commissioner is breaking state law, like they're breaking the law, breaking, violating state law, but I think it says that later. Um. Right? It doesn't say that later. It says that somewhere else in the handbook. It clarifies that it's a violation of law. Okay.
Yes, actually, I believe it's before this.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think most of the other things I have are like edits to something that's already been passed, it's just like typos and stuff. Thanks for patience while I look through my own notes.
That's fine. We have all nice.
Yeah, right. Um. Oh, I was gonna ask for an addition also of something that I saw was missing this time that we, I I think that it's missing. It's state code that might, I would be interested if the rest of the commission would like to see this, but um, we don't have any state statute in here that's talking about what, uh, violation of closed meetings. I think that, um, I think that when we talk about closed meetings, they're in the actual agendas, but they're not in the handbook. It could be a nice addition to the handbook, like, um, because closed meetings are because the constitutional right to privacy is considered higher than the public's right to know. And so um, if commissioners were to violate closed meetings, they're violating like a constitutional right of individuals' right to privacy. So I think there's something in state code about that, and I wonder if we could include that, like, as an important part of the handbook.
Yeah, I would think that would be.
I don't know.
This will code, yeah.
I don't know the code, the state code off the top of my head, but I think, Mr. Gager, is there state code on that? Do you know?
Uh, there are penalty provisions related to that, and I'm not sure off the top of my head if it's a misdemeanor or felony. I do believe it's a misdemeanor.
Okay, so, but it's like, it's an MCA something.
It is, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
For that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just thinking that, like, that's something over the years. It just seems like it'd be a nice thing to maybe have in the handbook as a quick reference for us. Um, okay, now I'm gonna go back to the order of comments. Thank you guys for your patience with me. Um. So I'm going, I'm like looking for it. Swipe, swipe, swipe. What page is it on? Maybe. Thank you. So I tend to agree with my fellow commissioners. I'm particularly thinking of like, you know, I've been at a few meetings where we've had like between fifty and a hundred comments. And I'm thinking specifically of something like the wellness center. Let's say we had some really big turnout for those meetings. And the reason I'm thinking of the wellness center is because, um, we had people from all over the community, in Livingston, out of Livingston, partners, et cetera, like, all the comments were really helpful for the commissioner, but ultimately what happened was, um, the county commissioner said, no, thank you. We don't want county residents to be a part of the decision. And so the city residents were, um, are the ones that are taxed for this, like they opted in, right? They voted a tax on themselves. And also, like, there's still, I just think that's like an important distinction because that's gonna be one of the most significant sort of like local projects that's happened that people have taxed themselves for, that there will be a distinction between city residents and county residents. And I think as a commissioner, that's really important. Um, because it's such a significant amount of money that people, you know, chose to put on their tax bill that we are really like tending to the people that are, that have opted in for this, um, service from the community, um. So for times like that, like where there's a pretty big difference between, um, the cost of service between city and county, I certainly still want to hear from county residents and like business owners, but it's not lost on me, like who's footing the bill for that, um. Because the county said, no, thank you, and everybody right outside of city lines was not included. You know, by choice, right? They could have asked their county commissioners, like, yes, we want to be a part of this, please opt in, but that didn't happen. So, you know, to Commissioner Lyons' point, I think like for really large meetings, um, I see that the purpose of that, and I think it could be helpful um, as decision makers, specifically, right? Like, let's think about some things coming up, right? Let's think about, you know, there's talk of, um, what are all the things I've heard? You know, people talk about since I've been a commissioner, of course, a crossing, of course, yeah, parks, of course, um. What else? Oh, we want more services. We want like more buildings. We want a building for another fire department. We want another police department. Like, these are all things that cost many millions of dollars that would be like many, like, people choosing to raise their taxes more and more. And so like, as somebody who has to vote on the money, that is kind of helpful actually to know, like, is it the people asking or is it lobbyists asking? Like, that's another thing as a commissioner, I've heard a lot over the last like seven years is like, um. Like, that's another thing as a commissioner, I've heard a lot over the last like seven years is like um city residents. My big takeaway as a commissioner, one of my big takeaways is city residents want everybody to pay their own way, they don't wanna like pay for county services, they want county services like to, you know, pay their fair share, like county residents to pay their fair share. Not all city residents feel represented by various nonprofits and businesses and other agencies that come and lobby us. That's been a huge thing I've heard knocking on doors, you know, it's like those people don't speak for us, and so um it seems that the residents want to know like um the difference between like who's getting paid to come to the commission meeting as an employee of somewhere versus like who's, you know, showing up with their kids um. That comes into play when I think about this decision, and then the other thing I was thinking was um. Oh, what was the other thing I was thinking? Do you know, do you know what it is? Can you read my mind? You feel that class? Was there a class on it? I don't think that this is like excluding anyone. I think that, oh, the other thing was, oh, my gosh, you guys, I remember when we got this, it's not this most recent petition, but at some point, you, maybe you remember, I don't even remember what the petition was. But it was like X number of si- signatures and we needed to do a thing because the petition had so many signatures, and then it was given to the commissioners and like, we looked at page one and it was like people from New York City, people from like Denver, Colorado, people from wherever USA, cause it was like an on- some online thing. And then they wanted us to vote a certain way, and we were looking at it like, I don't remember if it was Warren sitting next to me, Commissioner maybe, or something, you know, it was like this isn't even.
I remember vaguely, yeah.
Those are things that come back to us as commissioners, it's like, who are you working for? So like, that's like a real thing that we've sort of encountered over the years and never like figured out like a process to sort of address, like that would be a big difference, right? Between like a person that lives in Livingston and somebody who maybe has never even been here, which is like fine that they've never been here and they care about our community, but like, should we be voting for somebody that lives in New York City? I would say I worked for the people who put me in office, which are people in Livingston, but like, like those people still matter, like I and also they have their own electeds, right? So um, that's kind of what I'm thinking about the order, so I don't really see a problem with it. Um, I think it will just take some practice if the commission wants to go this route, we'll have to like really work together. You know, um, that's fine, we can do hard things, if this is the way the commission wants to do it, this isn't a particularly hard thing. I think um, I also think that most business owners and other organizations also value citizens in Livingston first, like I think that everybody here would value the regular person first before, you know, organizations that were lobbying us, so like I think that that's fine too. Yeah, that was so many words I yield, I'm done. Do you wanna go around to?
Um, yeah, well, Commissioner Wilkes brought up um the pledge of allegiance.
Do you want us to just do like issue by issue or what?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go with the pledge of allegiance to start with. I'm gonna state, um, first of all, I'm gonna state um I believe in God, Jesus Christ is my savior, I remember Saint Andrews Episcopal Church. I have no problem with the pledge of allegiance, as long as we go back to the pre-fifty pledge of allegiance, where we leave out one nation under God. That was put in during the Eisenhower administration. Whenever we say the pledge, I intentionally leave that out. Just because I have atheist friends. I'm not putting, pushing my religious beliefs on anybody else. That's my thought, that's my feeling on it. I guess I offended somebody. But anyway, that's, that's how I stand on pledge, I love pledge of allegiance, but I just don't like the addition. Yeah, that was done by the Eisenhower administration. Okay, I yield on that one, or do, do we, well, I guess we're going, you want it on, so I guess if anybody wants to have discussion on it.
So are we putting the comment order aside right now?
Well, let's go to comment, I mean, uh, comment order.
Do you wanna do the pledge first or comment?
Yeah, just good pledge first. By the way, I brought it up.
Uh, I'm ambivalent on the pledge. I have nothing against the pledge of allegiance, um, although my experience saying it as a child, I didn't really think about it very much. Um, and the more that I said it, the less I thought about it. Um, but if it's important to people, that's fine, I didn't, but I um I don't know how much it's gonna add to the, the meetings. So I don't, I, I, I don't feel strongly about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I grew up in a military family. So I was taught lots of things about the flag and how to respect the country and that pledging allegiance is a lot more than to a piece of fabric. Um, that said, like, we were taught how to treat the flag. And what it represents, that we don't pledge allegiance to fabric, we pledge allegiance to democracy in our country. And that's why we serve, right, including local government. So I don't really have a problem with the pledge. I think that Commissioner Lyons's point is valid, is totally valid, that it means different things to different people and it doesn't mean something to everybody. I think it's fine to include it or not include it, if, you know, Commissioner Wilch feels strongly, I would support that, and if you feel strongly to leave religion out of government, I support that, like I want this community to feel inclusive for everyone. People can certainly say in God if they want to, like I would I have nothing against anyone who, you know, believes anything except for if they wanna cause harm, I don't think that that's okay. So I'm fine with including it, like if you wanna do it, like.
Yeah, I mean, it can go without edit, I couldn't care less, but I just want my feelings known about that pushing religion on other people.
And I, if I, I just would say that I think that it's much more important, like pledging allegiance is important, but I think it's more important how we act in our spaces than anything else and like
Actions speak louder than words.
And they speak, they speak louder than putting my hand over my heart and making a pledge, like, following through with actions, but I was also raised Methodist, so it was about service, it wasn't about words, so. You know that, right? Very Midwest of me. Um, so yeah, that's my thoughts, is that? What do you wanna do next?
We were back to um.
Do you have a decision on the pledge?
Oh. No, um, fine, yeah, if you want it in there, yeah.
With your. I believe the city manager makes the agenda, so I guess we're making the request to see if he would like to add it to them.
You need a second for it, huh?
Um, sure, I guess, is that how that, is that how that's gonna work?
Ask him, he's right here.
Well, uh, so yes, the, the agenda and the uh, the agenda is set by me, however, the um, the order of the agenda, the, the topical areas um are an area that is codified in your hand.
Right.
Right, and so we had this discussion a little bit with the consent calendar, and so you know, this is an area, yes, under state code, I do decide which items are placed on the agenda for consideration. However, you know, this is really kind of more talking about the just the shell of the agenda, if you will, or the format of the agenda, and so I'm, I'm happy to, to take commission input, but if you all would like to defer to me, then I have heard your input and would be happy to make a decision moving forward.
Great. What do you do next? What's next on your list?
I might add also that when I was first on the commission, we did say watch. Can't remember, move and stop. Whatever.
I hear from a number of members of the public and they said they remember it, it was, it meant something to them for us to say it and as a group to say it. And so there's a number, certainly a non-zero amount of people that have asked me to please do what we could to add that trivial aspect to our agenda. But it's important to some, some people.
Without objection, we can put it there.
A non-zero amount.
Definitely not zero.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's, okay, okay. Were we back on the uh, public um comment order, I believe, right?
Whatever you want.
Believe that's Commissioner. Lyons was.
Things I wanna say about that.
Okay, Commissioner.
Commissioner Lyons. He said he want, we're calling on everybody but Commissioner Lyons who wants to talk about it.
I thought he said he had said anything about.
He wants to.
Oh.
He said he had something.
Okay. Uh, I gotta turn up my hearing aid, sorry.
So.
That's funny.
I haven't even eight o'clock yet.
I know.
Almost.
It sounds like there's relative agreement that kind of the 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 attempt to prioritize in, in cases of limited amount of available time in a meeting. There, the attempt to prioritize city residents. There, there's relative agreement on that. Again, I go back to, I don't think the structure of what we're seeing here would accomplish that, it just says these comments are gonna come in this order. I think that kind of given the, the comments that we've heard from the public, I think writing this in here in a way that clarifies that this is for the purpose of kind of high comment instances or ex- like expediting or high comment incidences, I think that that's critical, because I think requiring, okay, you know, for like today, we didn't have a lot of comment on, on certain things, we had the capacity to take everybody's comment. I think saying, okay, city residents come up first, then these people, then these people, then these people, online. City residents, these people, these people, these people, that's cumbersome, I think it might actually slow us down and have the, the reverse effect of what we're trying to do. So I think we need to make it clear that this is in unusual cases when there's a constraint on the amount of time um that we can allow for public comment. And the, the, the other thing is the purpose of that is to allow for sufficient deliberation among the commission, right?
Absolutely.
We, we, we need to balance input with deliberation. So I think that there are ways we can just kind of massage what's here. Um, I'd be happy to. I would suggest that we started out by saying in meetings with unusually large numbers of public commenters or something like that, that the unusually large numbers of public commenters actually feels a little cumbersome, but that was what uh I came up with extemporaneously. Uh, the chair shall solicit comments, et cetera. Um, I think that even just starting that way, there's not a structure there for expediting the comment, period. So I think that we could say the chair can choose to end public comment um at a pre-specified time for the purpose of facilitating ample time for commission deliberation. What I'm trying to get at there is instead of the chair being able to say, okay, we're done with public comment, because I don't like the way this is going, if the chair feels like we need to put any kinds of constraints on public comment, the chair should at the onset say that we're gonna put these, uh, this amount of time on public comment.
Right.
I think that that achieves the, the goals of, of this change in policy in a way that isn't necessarily excluding anybody. Um, and kind of has a mechanism for discretion, a little bit of discretion for, from the chair. And doesn't require that we implement a cumbersome kind of categorization process all the time. So that's what I'm suggesting.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Absolutely.
I think that um, I just wanna get some like clarification around the law, cause I think we're required we're required public comment, like, and also I think that we're required, I don't know that we can put time limits on it. I think the only thing we could put time limits on would be the whole meeting and we'd have to like end the meeting. I don't think we can put time limits on public comment, or I think we have to continue the hearing to the next meeting, I don't think we, so I just, I wanna get some clarification on like what the law says, cause I think there's some stuff we can do with the time limit down to three minutes and maybe the order, but I don't know. Yeah, I'll stop talking and you can just answer the question.
Yeah, and then so I, you know, John, feel free to jump in, but the, the Montana Supreme Court has um opined over the years that the time limit between three and five minutes per person would be acceptable. But um, our ability to cut off public comment or just end a public comment period is actually, does not exist.
That's correct. I want one, I would like to add one thing. Judge Gilbert in her decision dealing with the wonderful subdivision application was critical of the council having the meeting as long as it lasted. And she, she, she put that right in the order. And so I think it behoves the um, you know, the commission to look at how long these meetings are lasting, because uh, you know, she uh, she was critical of the commission in that particular case uh, about how long that meeting lasted.
Did you say Judge?
Judge Gilbert.
Judge Gilbert, thank you.
That was in the subdivision application by uh.
Livingston West.
And they raised that as a point uh in their briefing, so I think, you know, the commission really needs to look at how long these meetings last. And because um, uh, Commissioner Lyons brought that up, is that there's a time limit uh where people are productive and after that it's a domain return uh when you're analyzing a lot of these complex issues. That's just my point.
So we have three to five minutes. We wouldn't limit comment, but we could just end the meeting, which is raises other questions, because some things we vote on are time sensitive and require a second vote, but I just wanted to get clarification.
So um, Vice Chair, in, in those situations, I have experienced in other jurisdictions where um, and, and I, I have literally been to um meetings where we had twenty-four hours of public comment, and so um in response to that, you know, the organization that I was working for at that time um got into just breaking it up, and so um, if we got to a point where it was say, you know, a predetermined nine or ten P M. And um deliberations were still going on or public comment was still going on, uh, what I've seen entities do is then just continue that conversation to a date certain, and that date certain maybe the following day at, you know, ten A M or five P M and just continue like that, and then have a multi-day hearing um to achieve the, the time limitations that um the Vice Chair needs noted, because statutorily, we do have to hear certain applications within a certain timeframe. Um, that is a, a way that I have seen that situation handled in other jurisdictions. Is, would it be possible? So I, I, you know, I, I fully support and, and think it's great that the, that the state has, you know, doesn't allow us to, to like stymie public comment, I don't think that's really anybody's intention at the table. It sounds like the only mechanism for for putting boundaries on the length of a conversation is putting boundaries on the length of a commission meeting. Is that correct? Um, and, and also the, the, you know, three to five minute timeline for public commentary, right?
Right. So that, yeah, that's kind of why I like the idea of the chair being able to say, we're only gonna do three minute, you know, comments on, you know, these things, so.
So you know, if we have forty commenters at three minutes, it's two hours of comments. I, I guess if if our only constraints are the length of the, the me, or the, our only boundaries are the length of the meeting or the length of the, the comment itself. The the ordering of comments seems to me like it's not a me- a a mech- a a mechanism for facilitating faster or more ex- a more expedient meeting. Mr. Gager, do you see, do you see any flaws in that? In that thinking? Um, not not necessarily, and and I I guess I, you may have sent some hesitation in my voice when, you know, you had earlier asked if if that was, you know, kind of the motivation for for this. Um it was, it it was one of the motivations, but it was not the only motivation. Hey, you know, quite honestly, I think a lot of you know, I was at a city managers conference recently and sat in on a panel from a number of city managers and um this is something that that a number of of other other cities do and it's it is in part for the the reasons that that were discussed by the commission earlier, right? It's somewhat prioritizing, especially on those topics that involve taxation um and involve city-specific issues. It really is a way to prioritize those comments to the commission. And and I, you know, I I can just think back to last meeting, uh when we talked about the zoning code. Um the first commenter represented an organization and he was based in Gallows County. And um while I really respect and appreciate the comments of that commenter in that organization. Um I I think there is, you know, some justification for um the city commission to want to hear from constituents first. And so that, I I will be honest with you, that was probably my main motivation um was prioritizing a little bit, but also yeah, you know, to to the extent that that it's um makes things more expedient, you know, that would be a a secondary benefit as well. Thank you. It's helpful. And makes sense. You know, I think honestly, I I don't think the commissioners are feeling much hesitation about the the ordering scheme, although I I think that um I think that a regimented and uniform application of that ordering scheme might be cumbersome and and maybe not too helpful. So I think potentially adding some chair discretion into the implementation of that might might make it kind of work on both ends of the spectrum. I still think that it would be helpful to have no, this isn't code in the terms of, in terms of um city code, but it, I'll use the term codify. I think it'd be helpful to codify a potential limitation of time of public comments um kind of for this, for the purpose of of facilitating expeditious meetings. I might suggest something else. I, so I I suggested earlier this language and we we heard that that doesn't work and I and I accept that and that's fine. Um what if we were to say something like, you know, at the at the discretion of the chair when when there is an instance of a lot of of a perceived large amount of public comments, the chair can limit public comment to three minutes. And um you know, that way, it's not, it's it's not always three minutes. We have this precedent of four. We don't have to change that. It seems to work like the majority of the time. But giving the the chair the the ability to to limit it to three minutes, I think in in those cases of like a high volume of comments might help to uh move things along, you know, that's that's reducing uh you know, that that particularly the more people there are, the more kind of um benefit that would have to moving things along, so. Maybe that's my my modified proposal is we give the chair the discretion to limit comments to three minutes and in times of high volume of comments.
Right, that's state law anyway. I mean, that's a minimum and that's why kind of like you're open-handed to surest discretion to, yeah.
I I I'm I'm good.
Yeah, I guess it's a deliberative question. So we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. The rock being we have three minutes minimum and the hard place is we have potentially meetings that could go on ad infinitum. And a district court judge that said our meeting goes too long. Now we've got another hard spot. The question I have, and perhaps it's hypothetical, it's something that that I mean, I guess I've seen in some of the larger meetings that I've been to, is a weaponized public comment. Forty comments is two hours, but four hundred is twenty hours. I mean, everybody in the city could come and talk. We could have a line out the door.
Can I hop in on that?
Yeah.
I I had it is, there there will come a day when Bozeman is really interested in some policy happening in Livingston. Um and Bozeman's a lot bigger than Livingston and they could fill up that waiting room with with comments. Um and and again, this isn't and like no- nobody's trying to exclude anybody from talking, but like those those circumstances are 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 highly plausible.
Can I have a turn?
Please, oh, yeah, I I interrupted him. I don't think he was done yet.
That actually underscores exactly what I was getting at is that we gotta find a way to, in some cases, the people that have the vested fiduciary stake in our decisions are the taxpayers and the voters of the city of Livingston. While I appreciate groups coming in by the busload from wherever they're gonna come in from. The fact of the matter is, we work for the people of the city of Livingston. And those are frankly, the people I wanna hear from. And so I yield.
Commissioner Noots.
Um I, I think the order is fine for when it's large groups. I have been in meetings that went, I think, one, one thirty maybe was like the record and that was way too long. It was a different city manager. We've never
Yeah.
gone that late, I don't think, with you, right? And it was that and that was extreme circumstances, yeah, where we had stuff we had to deal with, um. I as long as I've been here, being chair or working with other chairs, I've never seen a chair that just like runs the show solo. I think that if we come into the situation where the place is filled with Bozemanites. We know that state law is three minutes. I trust that like the commission, we're all elected by the people and I trust the city of, I trust the people that live here to that they put people in office that they want representing them and that the five of us together, whoever those five are, I trust that the five of us could handle it when it happened and come up with a plan on the spot within what's allowed by state law. It's fine to put three minutes in here. I trust whoever the commission is, whether it's, you know, the five of us or five totally different people. That they'll be able to handle it with whoever's the city manager and whoever's the city attorney when the time comes. So I don't think we have to figure out like every possible scenario because I I trust Livingston and I trust that those people that will be sitting here will be able to sort of handle that situation if it arises, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't wanna be like overly prescriptive. Um I think that this is helpful. This would have been helpful when we were dealing with some really contentious things in Livingston to just sort of like make it easier for the commissioners to follow if it was a lobbyist or if it was somebody that lived here, if it was somebody from the county that was like, just like wanting to make their voice heard and things that they used in the city, like that could be helpful to organize how we hear things. Cuz this is for us, you know, really to make our jobs easier as commissioners. I'm not worried about if people wanna filibuster like and take twenty hours, that's also their right. That's their right and they should do it. If there's a reason to do it. Maybe we'll be some of those people out there that are, you know, making it take twenty hours if we're not sitting up here. So like, I also don't wanna stymie that in any way. Um so I'm fine with like the recommendations of like this and just reminding that it like we have the ability to limit it to three minutes because of state law, but can I add? I mean, I would just say the discretion of the chairs always worked, working with the commission as long as I've been here.
A good, a good chair, good chair will work with the whole commission, say, in this instance. What do you guys think about limiting comment to three minutes?
Right.
You know, stuff like that. I mean, a good chair should do that and that's I, you know, as chair, I would do that. He's bursting at the seams.
I'm popping right over here cuz I wanna use all of your words to actually just, I think, make the change that hear me out. The chair shall have discretion to solicit comments from the public the yada 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 in the following order limiting to three minutes. So just the 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 mechanism exists or can exist, but it shall be the chair's discretion. So on a meeting of fifteen people in the building, that's not that
But you you need to cite M C, you know, my code annotated saying that actually state law says we don't have to give you more than three minutes.
Right. Yeah.
And and I think that should be right in there.
So we being able to prioritize residents. But it's the chair's discretion.
That's why we don't have a time on it.
Right.
But we can't limit it to three as per state code. Another thing, um on our agendas, used to say five thirty to seven thirty. And we'd have to extend the meetings.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Every hour. Yeah.
I just, I don't I don't think we need to be putting in like time limits. I think we just need to like the commission should not be micromanaged also, like we need to like put some trust that the commission are grownups. And that the five of us, whoever we are, can work together to do what's best. Because that's why people elected us, so. If that day happens where it's filled with Bozeman, we will figure it out when we get there. That's what I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
I support the language that Commissioner Willage suggested. Um I, you know, it it creates the structure and also makes it like it 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 doesn't, it doesn't micromanage the the commission. It it gives, it gives the opportunity to the chair to to apply that structure when we need it. So I I think that that's a a very
I think so too.
Uh elegant solution.
And I would, I would just say I think all the commissioner elects are present tonight. I like, please prove me right that we can like that we can do our things together if the room fills up with people from Bozeman. Knock on something, somebody have wood nearby, knock on wood, but just people in Livingston that show up, but Bozeman all shows up, we can figure it out when we get there, I think, the five of us, yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah, I would think so.
I think so.
You get all that, Mr. Gager, on that?
We got lots, we got lots of notes. We can run through everything then.
I know, I'm just before we move on to what's next?
Are we?
You're the, I don't know. I offered a whole bunch of edits.
I know.
Are we making a motion? On this?
I mean, if you want one, I'll do it.
No, I I
We have to make motion of everything.
Right.
I mean, I'm over here taking notes, but we should like run through a list of edits first.
So I I did make the list of, I believe I have nine edits that I would to run through, so.
Yeah, let's do that.
Um I will start with the most recently discussed, uh which is to add uh shall have the discretion to between chair and solicit in the public comment order. And then uh the second one is to add a note to the end of that um segment. Um which notes that the chair has the ability to uh reduce the comment period to not less than three minutes.
Not reduce, just limit.
Just limit to three minutes as per
as per Montana code, yeah.
Perfect, um and then
Bless you.
Again.
Two times.
Uh thank you. Third one I had was page one seventy-four, uh updating table contents to reflect on conflict of interest, not the um code of conduct and the the first reference there. Um number four is page one eighty-one to update historic reservations board to note that there's no city commission member. But it's um also historic preservation commission, um to be honest with me. Number five, page one eighty-two, section two eighty-two, uh revise the process um to state that the chair calls on the city manager and um it goes from there. Uh number six, page one eighty-three, uh which on and sub item three. Uh to clarify that members ask questions through the chair to the manager and the manager subsequently calls upon uh anybody who may be needed to answer that chair. Um number seven, page one ninety-eight. Um the uh was related to the third paragraph um where the disclosure form is currently requested uh to update that to be required um with the passage of the conflict of interest um code. Uh number nine um was to uh clarify and insert a note on the penalty provisions for deviolation of uh closed session rules. And then finally, there was the comment about the um potential inclusion of the pre-Eisenhower administration um flagrant negligence.
Oh, I think we went back to it doesn't.
Well, that was
That's the way we would
That was, so we had nine edits and then the last one was
Some conclusion.
Was a um a Mr. Gager heard our input and we don't vote on that because we don't set the agenda.
That's right.
Cuz that would be a violation of state law. So we're not gonna vote on the agenda, but you've heard thoughts from the commission, so on ten has an asterisk. And we're not voting on that or including it as an edit.
I'll move to approve the city commission handbook as presented and modified in recent comments by the city manager.
My second.
Motion by Lyons, second by Noots. Roll call, please.
Chair Sworps, four.
Vice Chair Noots?
Four.
Commissioner Lyons?
Four.
Commissioner Willage?
Four. Motion carries. Or oh, now moving on.
It's early.
Yeah, I know. We're down to city manager comes, Mr. Gager. What do you got?
Uh, you know, I will, I will keep it brief as an interest of allowing people to have, you know, some time this evening. I thank the commission for their work on uh the these issues and certainly the handbook tonight. Um and uh look forward to seeing you all on December second back in the room. Thank you, it's fun. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, if I don't see you before then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Commissioner Willage.
Actually, we got done pretty quickly. That's awesome. Looked to see it. Uh hope to see everybody downtown on Saturday. And I'd like to extend a happy birthday to my brother and mother-in-law on November twenty-seventh. Thanks, man. I yield.
Commissioner Lyons.
Uh I don't have any weather data because of the government shutdown.
Free zip, that there's a way.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Commissioner Noots.
Uh I wanna thank the commission. I always appreciate good conversation about the details and thank the public for coming out tonight and sharing. I'm also really happy to see, and I'm gonna name them just in order of votes. Commissioner-elect Jessica Wilcox, Cindy Daniels, and Camp O'Neil here tonight, so thank you for being here. Um it's really nice to know that the folks that are elected for the next round are here paying attention to what's happening right now um as we transition into a new year, so thank you for being here. It's meaningful to those of us that are up here. That'll be here next year, so thank you. Um I think that's it.
Hey, nothing, not a good add to that. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good name Livingston City Commission concludes at eight twenty-four. P M.